I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Goodyear Planning and Zoning for October 29th. And would you join the commission in a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members of the commission present tonight are five, and Chairman Geltzer and Commissioner Miller are unable to be at the meeting tonight. Next item on the agenda is the, will be the minutes of the October 15, 2008 Planning and Zoning Commission. We've had an opportunity to review those. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, I would then entertain a motion to approve the minutes of that October 15th meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Loretano moved and seconded by Commissioner Williams. And all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried five zero. If you would like to speak to an issue tonight on the agenda, would you kindly fill out one of these cards? I have one on one of the agenda items, but if you'd like to speak on any item, I'd like to request that you fill out one of these cards and hand them to the Secretary of the Commission. They're outside on the table, and I'll just pass at that particular point. Next item on the agenda, disclosure of ex parte communications. Seeing none, we will then move on to new business case 08-300-00009, CVS Pharmacy Use Permit, a public hearing. And I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Ms. Leclander to proceed.
Thank you Chairman DeBroerke, members of the commission. The aerial photo you see on the projector shows location for the proposed CVS Pharmacy site. This site is located in the Cotton Flower Marketplace Commercial Center at the southwest corner of Cotton Lane and Yuma Road. Here you can see a conceptual site plan for the CVS Pharmacy site. This application is requesting a use permit to allow a convenience use, which is the drive-through pharmacy. The conceptual site plan reflects how the owner intends to develop the property. Cotton Lane is out here to the east, Yuma Road is to the north, and you see the drive-through on the backside away from the corner. This is the front entrance of the store, and it is adjacent to another proposed potential future drive-through. This site is surrounded by commercial uses, and I can show you the overall, this is the approved master site plan for Cotton Flower Marketplace. You see the CVS on the corner here, as well as, you know, a proposed drive-through adjacent. The residential property lines are approximately 300 feet from the CVS location, and you see to the east, there is 225 feet of right-of-way dedicated for the future 303 corridor on Cotton Here you can see the proposed conceptual elevations for the CVS Pharmacy. The eastern elevation would be the side that's facing Cotton Lane, just here. The northern one would be facing Yuma Road. Staff is recommending approval of the use permit, subject to stipulations in the staff report, as the proposed use is compatible with planned uses within the area. It will not be a detriment to surrounding persons. The parcel of land is adequate in size, and it will have sufficient vehicular access onto Yuma Road. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Additionally, we do have CVS Pharmacy representatives here tonight that can answer any questions as well.
All right. Questions of staff on the pharmacy? Thank you. Would you, are there questions of the CVS staff at this time? Okay. Thank you. I guess then we're ready to close the public hearing. And is there commission discussion on this item? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion on the CVS Pharmacy use permit.
I move that we approve case number 08-300-009 with the stipulations or recommendations as written.
All right. Mr. Schlosser seconds that motion, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried five zero. Thank you. Next item of business is the staff presentation, and I will open the public hearing for a special use application to allow a preschool facility. And Ms. Welkin, you're on.
Thank you Chairman DeBroerke, members of the commission. Staff received a request for a special use permit for a preschool facility on a 1.9 acre lot, zoned agricultural urban, located on Sereville Avenue just north of Van Buren Street. The preschool would locate in an existing 3,300 square foot residence building, which would also include an outdoor play area to the west of the structure. The facility would be licensed up to 48 children. The property is surrounded by Canyon Trails Development to the west, Harvest Baptist Church to the south, and residences to the north and the east. The residences to the east are located more than 500 feet from the preschool facility and shouldn't have an effect on those residences. There is a residence that is just north of the property, however, there's an existing six-foot block wall and several mature trees that help to buffer the residence from the preschool facility, and staff hasn't heard any concerns from that property owner on the proposed use. Since the preschool would be located in an existing residence, it would have the look and feel of a residential neighborhood and wouldn't have a detrimental effect on surrounding property. As I said, the property and the surrounding properties are zoned agricultural urban, but many of the properties have gone to non-residential uses. There are three churches within the vicinity, and the residences in the area are large lot. The preschool would be open from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and there would be four drop-off and pickup times available to parents to stagger drop-off and pickup, so it wouldn't cause a circulation problem in the area. The proposed daycare facility is compatible with the surrounding uses and would not cause a detrimental effect on surrounding property. Staff recommends approval of the special use, subject to the stipulations that are in the staff report, and I can take any questions you have. The applicant is also available for questions. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Williams.
Katie, on page three in the details of the request paragraph, it says conversion will require the applicant to add adequate pay, parking, a fire sprinkler system, on-site fire hydrant, et cetera.
Yes.
Should all those things be listed as stipulations?
They're requirements of development, I mean, they're listed in other areas of our city code. Since it was a residence before, it was allowed to have a well and septic system, but since it's going to a non-residential use, the county and state who regulate well and septic systems actually require that they hook onto city water and wastewater. So that portion is covered under various statutes. I mean, if it would please the commission, we could add stipulations, but we have, through our ordinances and city code, we have the regulations to require them to do those things already.
As long as you're confident that it will happen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? I have one. I noticed on stipulation number two, the 55-foot half street, does that get up to, does that come up to that block wall, the fence that's on the west side of the property that's adjacent to Sereville?
Yes. The block wall would have to, that front block wall would have to come down at a time when the city would want to improve Sereville to its full width, and the property owner is aware of that. And so if the, if the property owner wished to put the block wall up, they would have to do that at their own expense outside of the city right-of-way. But yes, in the future, at some point, that wall will have to come down, and the applicant is already making plans for that, even though it'll be sometime in the future.
Okay. All right. Questions of, further questions of staff? Are there questions of the applicant by the commission at this time? Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing and ask for commission action on Palm Valley Montessori School Special Use Permit.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval for case number 08-350-00006, the special use application to allow a preschool facility in the AU zoning district.
Commissioner Laux made the motion. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll say it.
Commissioner Williams seconded. Then all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried five zero. Thank you. Next item of business is, actually, there are actually three items of business, and are you going to cover all three in one, or are you going to cover them separately? Mr. Kenny.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I would like to present the first two cases concurrently, and then the use permit for the fueling station separately.
All right. Okay. Then I'll open the public hearing for case 08-350-0002, Fry's Marketplace Large Retail Use Special Use Permit. Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. The Sereville Marketplace property is generally located at the northwest corner of Sereville Avenue and Yuma Road. Located to the south of Sereville Marketplace is Vanderbilt Farms Large Lot Single Family Residential Subdivision. Located to the west is Canyon Trails Unit Three Residential Subdivision. Located to the north is Agricultural Urban Zone property with a land use designation of single-family residential. And located to the east is Wildflower Ranch Residential Subdivision. The applicant is requesting special use, special use zoning to construct a 109,176 square foot Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User with a drive-through pharmacy and limited display of outdoor merchandise. The applicant is also requesting approval of a site plan for the Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User. Planning and zoning commission review and city council approval are required for these requests because the Fry's Marketplace exceeds 100,000 square feet, which places it in the category of a large retail user. Because the Fry's Marketplace is considered a large retail user, the applicant is required to comply with a specific set of development standards relating to building setbacks, landscape, architecture, pedestrian connectivity, and outdoor lighting. This is the master site plan and landscape plan for Sereville Marketplace, which shows the location of the Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User parcel in context with the rest of the commercial center. And it's a little bit difficult to see on this exhibit, but it's highlighted in red right here, the extents of the parcel. The proposed drive-through pharmacy is located along the east side of the Fry's Marketplace in this location, and the outdoor display area is located here, in this limited area. Located to the southwest of the Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User parcel is a fueling station site, and that will be the subject of the next presentation, and the request is for a use permit. I'd like to now present the elevations for the Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User. These are the, this is the front elevation, and this is the rear elevation. The elevations will incorporate simulated wood, integrally colored masonry block, stone, slate, tile, and metal features. All of the proposed building materials or colors, which were chosen from the Sereville Marketplace Commercial Center Master Design Guidelines. The citizen review meeting was conducted on October 1st, 2008. Approximately five residents attended that meeting, and there was no opposition to this project. Staff finds that the Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User meets all of the special use criteria found in section 4-1-3 of the city's zoning ordinance, and also the additional requirements for a large retail user, which are found in section 4-2-7 of the zoning ordinance, and thereby recommends approval of two requests with the stipulations noted in the staff report. There is one exception, or rather, one change that has been made to stipulation number two, that's in the Fry's Special Use Zoning Application, and stipulation three, that's in the Fry's Marketplace Site Plan Application, and everyone should have a copy of the revisions. To summarize, stipulation currently requires the developer to construct a traffic signal at the intersection of Yuma Road and Sereville Avenue. It also identifies the means by which the developer will be reimbursed for up-fronting the costs to construct the signal. The revised stipulation still requires the developer to up-front the costs of this signal, but provides flexibility in whether the city will actually construct the signal or the The stipulation also clarifies how the developer will be reimbursed for up-fronting the costs of the signal. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions.
All right. Are there questions by staff at this point? Seeing none, then Mr. Bull, and I also have a card filled out on this one, and we'll call on that person after Mr. Bull, representing the applicant.
Does that card this gentleman support?
Yes.
Great. Good. I will do my best to be brief. To begin with, we, I'd like to introduce a couple people to you if I could. Barry Sheimer is here. The Sheimer family, as you know, has been involved in this property for a long, long, long time. Dennis Barr and Gabriel Torres from Fry's are here, and we have various consultants in the room as well. We certainly appreciate staff's recommendations. We agree with their analysis. We accept the stipulations, including the modifications to the two stips, that stip two in the one case, and stip three in the other that has to do with the signal. We appreciate the changes to that wording. As we've discussed with staff, the timing of this signal and how it gets paid for and so on is something that's changed quite recently in the context of how soon it would go in, and that's based upon some new information provided by staff like, I don't know, a week and a half or so ago. As we discussed with staff, we're waiting for our traffic engineer to analyze some additional information. We may or may not need to discuss this further with staff before we go to the city council. If it's all good, it's all good. If we need to discuss it further, we will, but we didn't want to stand here and say everything is great, and then go to the city council and say we need to discuss this one stipulation. Having said that, we can go through as much detail as you'd want to, but at least for some of you who were on the commission a year, close to a year ago when we were here, when you approved the C2 zoning, we said we'd be back with Fry's and the applications for it, so this is another, many steps that we needed to take, and it's something that staff has certainly put Sheimers and the Fry's through their paces on the design, gone through a number of changes and revisions. We think it's a, it's a great use. We think it's a great design. Hope you agree, and request your approval.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Hearing none, you're on a roll then.
Time for me to sit down.
All right. I also have a card from Dennis Duncan, Vanderbilt HOA. And Mr. Duncan, would you give your full name and address?
Dennis Duncan, 16470 West Papago Street. Mr. Chairman and board members, I'll be brief also. I'm here representing the Vanderbilt Homeowners Association. Barry Sheimer has came to us in the beginning of this project to advise us what was going on in the corner there. He's attended a meeting for the residents and gave a presentation on, you know, what's going in there, and he has since kept us updated. We put the information out in our newsletters, and to this date, we've had no opposition whatsoever to the project. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will then, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic? I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's commission discussion.
Do we need one motion or two motions?
I think what we'll do is, we're going to separate all of the items out into each individual item, so we'll need one motion for each item. Is there, we're at the point where we're at the motion then. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval for case number 08-350-0002, Special Use Zoning for Fry's Marketplace Large Retail User with the drive-through pharmacy, with the revised stipulations, and I'd like to say welcome to Goodyear.
All right.
We wish you well.
Is there a second to Commissioner Williams' motion?
Second.
Commissioner Laux seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And then we will go to, we don't really need a staff presentation, but we will separate the item, case 08-600-00018, Fry Marketplace Site Plan, a request for approval. Is there a discussion by commission? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to the commission.
I move that we approve 08-600-018, the Fry's Marketplace Site Plan.
Commissioner Loretano opposed the motion to approve. Is there a second? Second. Commissioner Williams seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, is that motion with the revised stipulation?
With the revised, we'll add that to my motion, with the revised stipulations.
Okay. Yes, that includes the revised stipulation, I believe, number three on this item.
Yes, number three.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried five zero. And then we will then, I guess I better open the public hearing for Fry's Marketplace Fuel Station Use Permit, and Mr. Kenny.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Subject 1.76 acre property is generally located at the northwest corner of Sereville Avenue and Yuma Road, approximately 300 feet north of that intersection. The vicinity map shows the location of the Fry's, of the proposed Fry's Fueling Station parcel in relation to Sereville Marketplace and the rest of the surrounding properties. The applicant is requesting approval of a use permit to allow a fueling station as a convenience use within Sereville Marketplace. This fueling station will include a 176 square foot sales kiosk and nine fuel pumps. And that parcel is highlighted in black on this exhibit. The fueling station will be directly accessible from an access point on Sereville Avenue, as well as indirectly from access points on, three access points on Yuma Road. A 20-foot wide landscape buffer will separate the fueling station parcel from this drive aisle, which runs north to south, and a 30-foot wide landscape buffer has been provided along Sereville Avenue street frontage. The fueling station hours of operation will be from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight daily, as stipulated in the staff report. These are the elevations for the fueling station canopies. These elevations do not reflect the application of masonry, which will be applied all the way, or rather, over the entire columns, on each column. That will be modified prior to going to council, so that the elevation shows correctly. Citizen review meeting was held on October 1st, 2008, at the same time as the Fry's Marketplace Special Use Permit, and at the same, at the same time as that application. Again, there were five residents who attended that meeting, and there were no residents who opposed the project. Staff has evaluated the proposal and finds that the fueling station meets the conditions and required findings for a use permit, and satisfies the additional evaluation criteria required for convenience uses as contained within the zoning ordinance. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for your questions.
Okay. Are there questions of staff on the fueling station use permit? Mr. Williams.
Yeah, David, can you go back to the site plan? Yeah. Thank you. And I guess I have that, no, please zoom out just a little bit, please. So my question is about the 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight hours. Is it possible that on pad B or pad C, there would be a fast food restaurant with the drive-through that would be open till 1:00 or 2:00 a.m.?
Commissioner Williams and members of the commission, the applicant has advised staff that there could be a proposed drive-through restaurant at this location, and that's why you see a conceptual drawing showing that drive-through, and it really depends on the proposed use and the proposed operation of that drive-through, and all the details we receive when the use permit is submitted for that drive-through, when we'll make that determination.
My only point is that if the permitted hours of operation for a fast food drive-through are till 1:00 o'clock, I don't have a problem with the fueling station having the opportunity to stay open the same hours as a fast food restaurant.
Okay. I think we have seen some drive-through use permits receive approval to operate 24 hours. We've seen some receive approval to close at midnight. It's really difficult to determine at this time what the stipulations will be for that drive-through use, but if you would like to extend the hours for the gas station, you could certainly propose that.
I mean, am I crazy?
No. I, no.
I have a question. I just, because I don't fill up at midnight or something, so maybe, I don't know. Because when you use your credit card, when the use hours, can you use it 24 hours with the credit? I don't know. Can someone drive there 24 hours and get fuel anyway, or is it just the little?
That does not have to be attended. You can.
Commissioner Loretano, members of the commission, just to clarify.
I may be stupid, I'm sorry.
No, that's an excellent question. The applicant originally requested, or explained to staff that they were going to request 24-hour access to the fueling pumps by use of her credit card, and that the sales kiosk would be open from, I think, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. if I'm correct. And staff did not think it was appropriate for the station to be open 24 hours for two reasons. The first reason is the lighting issue. This pad is allowed to have an average illuminance of 20-foot candles when it's open, and so if it's open throughout the night, staff felt that there could be an impact on the adjacent neighborhood across the street to the east. adjacent neighborhood across the street to the east. Staff also had some concerns with potential noise issues from vehicles that would utilize the gas station between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM.
I guess I don't have any problem with making it the same.
Yeah, well, I guess the question is, if six months or a year from now, they come back for a use permit for a fast food restaurant to operate a drive-in till 2:00 AM, can they ask for an amendment then for the use permit for the fueling station to stay open at the same, with the same hours?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the applicant could request to modify their use permit approval in the future and have expanded hours if so requested.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good. Does the applicant wish to comment at this time?
Thank you again, very briefly. We appreciate staff's recommendation, agree with their findings and their conclusions and so on, and accept all five of the stipulations. The point that you were talking about having to do with pad C, and if it's a fast food pad, and if it's open till 1:00 in the morning, should this gas facility also be available at 1:00 in the morning? We think that makes a lot of sense, but we don't want to sandbag staff. And that we previously discussed these steps with staff, and while Fry's wasn't doing cartwheels over the idea of the hours of restrictions, we agreed to it for reasons that staff had touched on here tonight and explained to us in more detail. I think the conversation that took place a minute ago, that has to do with the possibility of pad C being fast food and open until 1:00 in the morning, and if that's the case, we come back to amend this use permit. Dennis from Fry's thinks that's fair and makes a good bit of sense, so what I would suggest for tonight is that we stick to the stipulations as they are in the staff report, but put on the record, as we've done, that if pad C becomes a fast food restaurant, and if it's open till 1:00 in the morning, then it probably would make good sense for us to come back with an amendment, or at least to consider at that time, and have it judged on its own merits at that time.
Thank you.
No further discussion regarding this item. Does anyone else wish to make a comment on the special use permit for Fry's gas station? Fuel station, I'm sorry. Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing and ask for commission action on Fry's Marketplace Fuel Station Use Permit.
I move that we approve, make sure I got the right numbers here, 08300005, the use permit for the fuel station for Fry's with the stipulations as written.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Loretano. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Louts seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. And the next item of business under new business, case 0830011, Airport Gateway at Goodyear Freeway Pylon Sign Use Permit. I'll open the public hearing, and Ms. Graber, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a bit of history. In October of last year, council granted preliminary approval to EJM Development Companies on the 197 acres at the southeast corner of Interstate 10 and Bullard Avenue. At the same time, they granted final PAD approval to the 25 acres located here for the Cancer Treatment Center Hospital. They did so in splitting the approvals because we had the details available for the hospital that were not available for the remainder of the property. The entire 222 acres is known as Airport Gateway at Goodyear. The use permit application before you tonight is for three freeway pylon signs. And this plan that you see before you is just a concept plan that's been prepared by EJM, it's not anything that's gone through the process. But they are proposing three pylon signs, one for the Cancer Treatment Center Hospital here, and these two would serve to identify the location of the uses in the remainder of Airport Gateway. However, since the hospital is the only site, the only portion of the site that does have final PAD approval, and the remainder has only preliminary PAD approval and no site plans, staff finds that there's only justification for one freeway pylon sign for the Cancer Treatment Hospital and for the remainder of EJM. We are recommending a stipulation, however, that would allow them to come back and amend, apply to amend the use permit to get a second pylon sign for the remainder of EJM's property. You probably recall that when the Straya Falls Mall was approved, a similar stipulation was put upon their pylon signs whereby they would have to come back and earn their second pylon sign. Ultimately, if all three of these pylon signs are approved, they'd be 1,700 feet apart, and next week you'll have, or next month, I'm sorry, you'll have an application before you for Goodyear Palms Plaza, which is a 40-acre parcel right here. They are proposing a pylon sign, and it will be 1,700 feet east of the Cancer Treatment These depict both the Cancer Treatment Center and what Airport Gateway would propose for their two signs. All the pylon signs will be 80 feet tall, the legs, this portion down here, will be 28 feet high, and the remaining 52 feet high will be approximately 26 feet wide. And all three of the signs, as you can see, will match the colors of the hospital. The hospital is also proposing an electronic message board that will display public events and happenings at the hospital, and so it's anticipated that the message will change very infrequently. The use permit application is also requesting electronic message boards for the two EJM pylon signs, to actually, it states in their narrative, to depict advertising at a rate of four messages per minute. Because the pylon signs are, per our ordinance, intended just to identify the location of facilities, staff is recommending that the two EJM pylon signs have no message boards. We would, however, be very happy if they added the, that is a tenant space, so there would be a total of six tenant spaces. The overall request generally meets the conditions and findings for use permit and for the pylon signs. However, because staff does not feel that all three are justified at this time, we would request that you recommend a council approval of only two. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, and there's also representatives from EJM, and representatives from the hospital are here as well.
All right, good. Are there questions of staff at this point? I also have a card from Mr. Stiles, representing.
I can go over here.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Loretano.
So I can kind of get the, the one exhibit you gave us, the one that has all the dots?
Yeah.
I'm not very good at distance, and it says, some of them look like they're kind of crammed in there. Are those 1,700 feet away, like the triangles that say approved but not constructed, and then with the existing, the red one? I mean, some of those up there look, starting to look a little, I guess, crammed in there. Are those all 1,700 feet away from each other?
This is the Airport Gateway property, right here. And this one here is, would be located right at the Bullard Avenue access ramp. There would be a third one over here that's not shown on this map at this time, because when this was prepared, it was just an estimate of how many would be on this piece of property. The hospital one would be right here, and this is where EJM would propose to have the third one be. So assuming, you know, they put one at each corner and one in the middle, that's 1,700 feet. This one here, further to the east, right adjacent to Litchfield Road, represents the one that will be before you next week, Goodyear Palms Plaza, and that would be 1,700 feet east of the hospital one.
So that would be 1,700 feet.
Yeah.
And then the one that's across the street?
On the north side.
On the north side. How far distance is that from one of these? You know, about?
Whatever the right-of-way width is of the interstate, I'm.
So they're almost, would be almost right across from each other? Or?
No, it appears as though if this is in the middle of the Airport Gateway property, and this is at the far western end, that's kind of in between those two, but as I said, on the north side of the interstate. So that's big distance.
And then the other question I have, if I may, for the message board, you were saying digital. Were they planning on digital just letters, or were they planning for the advertising, like those advertising billboards you see now that are actually like pictures and they change? I mean, what were they planning, or what was the idea here?
It appears from the information that was provided to us that the Cancer Treatment Center is proposing simply messages, simply words, but I'll let them speak to the specifics of that. I would assume that Mr. Stiles, and again, he can speak to that as well, he would prefer to have this for some form of advertising, and therefore, I assume, more graphic and changing more frequently than the hospital sign would.
Okay.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Sasha.
Of course.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess I have a general comment, maybe we're too far down the pike already for this. I understand the need for signage. It's very easy for signage to be overdone. Is there, can we require some landscaping behind the signs? And the reason I say that is, most of the world, the window to Goodyear is I-10, you know, and I'd like us to look a little upscale, and not like an arcade. You know what I'm saying? So is, as we, maybe, maybe it's too late now, but as we go forward, when people come in and want freeway pylon signs, can we require them to do some landscaping that soften and enhance the view for people passing through the city of Goodyear on I-10?
Chairman, Commissioner Williams, certainly it is within the purview of the commission to require, in this application or any future application, landscaping or other measures to mitigate what you believe would be the impacts of the use. So certainly landscaping would be consistent with that, if you so desire.
Thank you.
And there are certain setbacks that have to be maintained from the interstate right-of-way line, so within those setback areas would be ideal location for landscaping.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions of staff. Mr. Stiles has filled out a card here. Would you like to come forward and answer any further questions, or respond to the current question?
You may use my.
And Mr. Stiles, would you give your address, besides your full name?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Fred Stiles with EJM Development. Address is 7419 East Hill Drive, Scottsdale, Arizona. Yeah, going back to, and I hate to make this one a little bit different than all the other cases, where it was just agreeable. So this is the first time that I've had to disagree a little bit with staff. But going back in history, and like Karen showed on the original preliminary PAD that was approved, and the final PAD for the hospital, there was, you know, the three pylon signs shown, it was always understood that they would take the separate approval process. But this process goes back even farther than a year ago. It started a year and a half ago, when CTC first, you know, came to the city, and, you know, we, you know, the city's been over backwards, everybody's worked hard, and we've worked hard, you know, and CTC has worked hard to make this whole project possible. And we're currently out there spending millions of dollars on infrastructure to make the rest of the property shovel-ready, I guess a term that everybody's familiar with now. And the reason behind that, so that we can proceed when somebody does come to Goodyear and wants to locate their business or retail here. I know it's a little difficult right now, but, you know, we still want to be in that position. And part of that, another thing that's really important, is when a company comes, that they know, you know, here, this is approved. I don't think we're going to run out and put up a, the pylon sign just to put it up. You know, they're very expensive, and there wouldn't be any need to. But if it's approved, and that company comes, we can say, yes, we can deliver that. But if we don't, or we have to meet some conditions that may or may not fit at the time, depending on if one pylon sign's already up with, you know, the way it's written with one or two tenants, and, because there's a condition that says it has to be filled with tenants before we can get the other one. It creates an issue, especially if the other company's located at the other, you know, either, depending on where the first pylon sign would go, whether it's on the end of the property or in the middle of the property, it could be 1,700 feet or more away from the pylon sign. So we kind of disagree, we disagree with that, but we think it's very important that the approval process be in place. And we've designed the signs to complement the hospital. It's going to be very consistent, very nice, and we do have, we are putting in, I don't know if you drive over that area very much, but we're in a process right now of landscaping all of Fillmore, from the railroad tracks all the way out to Bullard. We'll be doing 143rd Avenue as well, and we'll be doing Bullard, and when Bullard's finished, there'll be three lanes going north and two coming south. It's really going to be a nice, you know, a nice project, and we hope that we're able to attract businesses and retail that, you know, the city would like to see. So, you know, that being said, you know, we respectfully request that you approve the application as submitted, with inclusion of staff's stipulations number three, four, five, six, seven, and nine.
Okay.
And just to be clear, we're talking about the two signs at this time?
Three signs. The application is for three pylon signs.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to some of the things that Mr. Stiles said? He mentions having the approvals in place, having the approvals ready. As I stated, Mr. Stiles still needs to go through the final PAD approval process on his property. He also needs to go through the site plan approval process on his property. So it isn't just the pylon signs that are an issue, he has work left to do. The stipulation that we put in place regarding earning his second sign has certain performance-based criteria, again, much the same as was done with the mall. And with the mall, we had approved a five-year timeframe in which they could earn that second sign. Because we know economic times are a little different right now, we extended that time period to seven years. So I think we're accommodating the, the way things are today in this particular stipulation. Also, I guess I would say, in terms of a big user coming in and locating in the middle of the property, I think it would, it would be Mr. Stiles' place to encourage the, that particular user to utilize the pylon sign right at the Bullard Avenue access ramp, because that's, you know, that's what these signs do. They identify the location, and where better to put it than on the access ramp.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Karen, we are, at this point in time, we are not actually denying the possibility of putting up a third sign, are we? Aren't we just saying we're going to approve two and we don't, we want to wait until a later point in time, there'll certain things, good things happen before we take action on the third sign?
That is correct. That is correct. The application is for three. We're suggesting the two be approved now, but leave it entirely open for them to come back and apply to amend this use permit to add the third sign. And seven years in which to do that.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes, Ms. Loretano.
And any other additional sign package, like when you go on up to the Estrella exit where the Mervins has signage on the back, that you can see that from the freeway, that's not precluded, that would have to be a separate application here. So like, what I'm guessing is some of these big retailers right against the freeway can basically get additional signage anyway because they're backing right up to the freeway.
Oh, if any of these buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would, they would have wall signs and, you know, entry signs to the, to the development. And staff is reviewing that comprehensive sign plan now, but it was these use permit applications.
It was not just the one monument.
Oh, right, no, that's, either you have that or nothing.
With the monument and, okay. Because I was thinking what you were saying about Bullard, that's where you'd want it anyway.
Yeah. I would think.
Okay. Are your questions answered, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I do have one more comment from Mr. Stiles. First, you know, we're absolutely delighted you're here.
For delighted to be here.
You know, I don't think, I don't think there's anybody in the city of Goodyear that isn't tickled that you all are coming here. And, you know, I've seen your plans. I know, I know you have plans for a really upscale development in the whole area. And I guess I just would like to ask you to just be patient with us, you know, put in your things, because I know you're going to do an upscale job. Put in the two signs and show us how you can mitigate the view. And, you know, if I'm here when you come back for the third one, I'll tell you I'll do everything I can to make sure it happens without any problem.
We appreciate that a lot. We are trying to do, you know, good things here. And I know here we're, also we own a 230 acres to the, on the south side of Ann Buron that goes all the way down to Yuma that we're trying to move along as well. But, you know, we're not going to go out, with your approval, we're not going to go out and build, put up the pylon signs because they don't, they, by themselves, don't do anything. It's the fact that we can have those and that we can go to, you know, XYZ retailer or whatever and say that we have that in place. That's what's the most important, you know, part here. It's, it's just like, you know, you said, you know, we are spending the money to improve the property now to make it, to make it, you know, appealable, attractive, and upscale and shovel-ready. And it's just part of that process to have all of, all of their ducks in a row, you know, so that when we, when somebody is available, you know, we can go after them hard. And Karen's right, you know, we still will have to come back for, you know, site plan approval, final PAD approval. But I know, you know, from past experience, working with the city, that especially if it's a big company, we're not talking about a 2,000 square foot tenant or something, that the city is very, they're awesome, about getting, you know, these approvals done fairly quickly. So I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about that aspect. I just want to be in a point, position that we can, you know, we can market the property to companies to come here and tell them that we have this as opposed to, well, maybe. Maybes are, maybes in this day and age, you know, don't, just don't work. We, we have five and a half million square feet of buildings in the metro area here. And, you know, we're out there, you know, slugging it out every day, trying to lease them against the competition. There's, if you read the paper at all, it's kind of like the housing market. There's a lot of buildings available. And so we have to do everything we can and we have to be in a position to tell that tenant, that company, that yep, that's there, it's in the building, you know, we're not going to take six months to build it out or whatever. It's the same, it's the same kind of thing. You have to be in a position to deliver.
Does, does, would it kill the, kill a deal with, say, an employer that wanted to build a nice office building with 400 employees? Would he go someplace else if you said, we've got everything in place except I do have to go back to planning and zoning for approval for your freeway pylon sign?
It'd really depend on the deal. Probably not, but I don't know. And that's why I say it's not worth taking a chance because approving of three pylon signs or 50 pylon signs, which would be ridiculous, but approving three pylon signs in a space that, you know, almost it's over a half mile or way over a half mile, two-thirds of a mile long, it doesn't cost the city anything right now. The city will be making money actually when we put it up to get, you know, construction sales tax and that kind of thing. And they'll, and it will, when we do put it up, it will be bringing in, you know, jobs or whatever the case may be. So, you know, I don't see any downside in, in the approval to the city.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Stiles, I have just one quick question. As far as your signs, because you're asking us to eliminate number eight, stipulation of eight as far as the electronic message displays, what do you plan on having on the message board?
Well, as you know, retail tenants in particular are very big on signage. And so the more that you can provide for that, you know, the more they like it, the more the merrier. You know, you've got to keep in mind, hopefully, you know, right now, tonight it wasn't like that, but, you know, when I-10 gets widened and everything, people will be going by there 65 miles an hour, they're going to see a message. It doesn't matter whether it's a message, it's the same message there for five days or five years, they're going to see it in a blink of the eye. So if it changes whether it's, you know, I guess according to the code or it's, it's up to the discretion of the city council to set the time, message change time and things like that, that's not a real, you know, four, four times per minute, that's not a real issue. But like I said, if somebody going by on a freeway, you know, they're only going to see one, one message. It's, it happens so fast.
But I guess I'm more concerned about what those messages are going to be.
Well, it's going to be related to, you know, the businesses that are there because that's obviously what we want to attract is somebody's going, if somebody is going down, down I-10, we'd rather have them stop in, you know, get off at Bullard or Litchfield and do business in Goodyear than go to Avondale. So if we can help attract business, you know, or people to come here, I think that's beneficial to everybody.
Okay. Any further questions? Before I close the public hearing, yeah, maybe, Karen, before, too long, Cancer Treatment Centers of America is also represented here and I'll ask if they wish to make a comment at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Karen?
Could I respond to Mr. Stiles? We can go back and forth all night. One of the things that I want to remind the commission of, it isn't just a matter of Mr. Stiles doesn't have final PAD approval, he doesn't have site plan approval, but the ordinance actually suggests that pylon signs be a half a mile apart. So to be able to put them at closer proximity than that, there really needs to be solid justification, I think, for that, that middle pylon sign. And that's what we're hoping these stipulations will bring about.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams? Do we need to discuss this issue? Do you want to discuss? Well, we're at that point. If there's no further public comment, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission discussion.
Mr. Williams? I can start. If we take these things in a vacuum, it sounds so great. Hey, we're just going to have one or two or three, but everybody wants one or two or three and the next guy wants one or two or three. And pretty soon, everything, you know, every quarter mile, we're going to have a freeway pylon sign with six or eight tenants on it. I mean, I'm just concerned about the overall impact and think that, you know, even three is too many. I am of a mind to even wish to ratchet it down and amend stipulations one and two to only do two freeway pylon signs with justification to even for the second one.
Ms. Loretano?
I think I'm okay with how the city has it written with the two and then when they show some sort of need for the third. And the reason I'm okay with the two is because the Cancer Treatment Center, it is a different business and it's, it is further away from the freeway. You guys aren't going to have the benefit of a lot of the retail, just looking at, it's going to be centered in the same places when you look at the Estrella exit where there's the Mervins, where there is additional signings that can be seen from right before the entrance ramp. You can see Mervins right off of there and if it's retail, you'll be able to see that. With the cancer center, it is further back. And I think especially being a hospital-type area, you're going to have people, you know, there aren't a lot of cancer treatment centers. My, my theory anyways, you're going to have people that are going to need to know where to go for that. And it's not, it really is advertising for that. For me, it seems more location. If you have relatives that are here and you need to go find where they are and you're not familiar with Goodyear or the West Valley or the state of Arizona, I think that's a good help for those people. And in fact, with theirs, I wouldn't have the problem with, it looks like just a digital, you know, sign like Breast Cancer Awareness Month or something. I think that is more of a public service. So I'm actually, my opinion anyway, is that okay? With regard to the retail sign, however, I do understand that we need it as a tax base. We need that to come in here. But I think if we do give them the opportunity for one and then when that one fills up, there's another, I don't see how that's going to hurt the retails. They'll be like, this is so successful, we filled up one pylon sign, we're filling up another. I think that actually has the opposite effect and shows that I am not favorable for the digital for that because was it, it's Tempe, it's right up the 202, has a lot of those signs, the 202 freeway.
Tempe Marketplace.
Marketplace. We drove by there at nighttime and I understand what Sean says, it looks, it looks hideous when you're driving by. I mean, you've got the Pretty Town Lake back there and then you drive, next thing you see is that marketplace and it's all lit up like Vegas and there's all these signs rotating. And I don't like that aspect. So I, I think I'm kind of separating, but I would be okay with the stipulations as the city has written them.
Mr. Williams?
I don't know what to say, you know, it's, I mean, it's a tough issue. You know, I understand where he is and what they want. And I understand what I'm asking for, it costs more money. But I, you know, it is, it is the window to Goodyear for most of the world. I-10 and I, you know, as, as we go forward, when we deal with these, I wonder if we can find ways to mitigate the appearance and make it, you know, look less like an arcade and more like a pretty nice community. And I know from their plans, they're doing that with the rest of, you know, they appear to be doing that with the rest of the, the area, you know, the plot plan. And that being said, I'll, I'll go along with whatever you all like and I will tell Mr. Stiles, I will help him get whatever he needs down the road. And do what you can to make Goodyear look nice, please.
Okay. Any further discussion regarding pylon signs? Hearing done. Then I guess I will then close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
I move that we approve, I'm sure I have the right number here, 08300011 with the city's stipulations as written.
Okay. Commissioner Loretano made the motion to recommend approval. Is there a second? I'll second. Commissioner Williams seconded. And then commission action, all in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And commission members opposed, nay.
Nay.
And Commissioner Lauks, so it passes four, zero. Oh!
Portimana.
I'm sorry.
I know you'd like to believe I'm not here sometimes.
No.
No.
Four, one.
Yeah, if I need to justify, I mean, certainly I appreciate the fact that we have, you know, commerce coming in and I hope that we can do all that we can to keep it coming in, but free signs is just too much for me in light of all of the other freeway pylon signs. I think, I think you'll find that, that my votes on these are rather consistent. So I'm not singling you guys out for any reason. I just would like to, you know, an overall limit on the number of signs on I-10.
All right. Thank you. And we are at the point, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are at the point for staff communications.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commission, while we were talking about the CTCA project, we are, they are planning to open before the end of the year, sometime about mid-December, and they're arranging for tours, first, possibly the second week in November, in groups of five to seven people. So if you would like to go on a tour, let us know and we'll schedule you on a tour of the hospital.
I would. I saw Luke's return comment. Do you really have seventeen and a half?
No, just kidding. Just thirteen.
What did you say? Just kidding, I said.
My shoe size, I'd say thirteen.
We don't have to have our own steel toe boots, do we?
Yeah, I think I did.
So we just have, okay.
You have four of you then.
Luke and Bob and...
Oh, I'd like to go.
Sherry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carol, did you want to go?
Yeah, yeah. I responded back. I can't the second week of November. First week of November is okay, but...
I got an email from Kim this morning saying that maybe we could do it after, when we do the tour for the 19th meeting, we could, we could do it at that time.
That'd be good. That works.
Will that work instead of, we could do a tour of the hospital instead of...
Okay.
Okay. Our next meeting is the 19th, by the way. Is there, are there any other items we need to talk about?
19?
Tell them about.
She's going to try to work it out with the CTCA staff.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Do you have any questions to make?
Okay. And I think we had an email from Joe on the December 5...
Boards and Commissions.
...planning training.
Yeah.
And so, okay.
That's all I have.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.